Thank you, thank you.
Oh, okay, I got it.
You didn't cause trouble?
Yes.
Why wouldn't I cause trouble? It's the only way to do it. I'm not, I'm just trying to get your papers sorted, John.
You okay?
Do you know what's going on?
Gosh, did you get a jolly rancher in your?
I'll do it.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I'll say a little prayer.
That was kind of really funny.
You didn't even offer to help.
I think she was.
I was gonna take the opportunity to hit you on the back of the back.
She was trying to see if I'd bet you know.
Everybody laying up.
I could be blamed.
Like new airplane, everybody.
Probably wouldn't do that.
That's a great movie.
They couldn't pick that thing up every time.
Mm-mm.
Councilman Huster.
At this time, we'll start with the public hearing. We're gonna open a public hearing for the solid waste department. So Jennifer, you have something to present or say?
By the way, IU football has been killing it.
Who IU?
Wow, I don't know if any of you Purdue fans saw the game coming in, but.
No, but I love the practice, so it's interesting.
Thank you, Debbie.
The Bulls always do well, but.
That's right, go Bulls. And Marion wanted to. Lots of football fans, so that's good.
Purdue didn't pierce one.
No, I'm Jennifer Lawrence, Director of the Boone County Solid Waste Management District, for you for incoming council binding review. And we have a projected budget of five hundred and sixty-five thousand eight hundred fifty-six dollars for twenty twenty-five.
And we did go over this with you during our budget session, so we, the council members did see this, so. So at this time, I'll open it up to public comment too. If there's anyone from the public that wants to make a comment about the solid waste department.
I have a comment.
I do have a question. There is a, I do have a question.
Yep.
You know what, I'll ask you after.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? If not, we will need a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there properly moved a second to close the public hearing on solid waste? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say ayes and ayes.
Aye.
All post same sign.
Thank you, all, okay?
Thank you, you too.
So now, at this time, I'll also open up the public hearing on the council budget or the Boone County budget itself. We gotta open that up for a public comment too. So at this time, we'll open it up to, if a council member has something to say about the budget, now's the time to say something about that if they so choose. And we'll also, also open it up to the public for any comments, and then we have to close that portion of it. So is there any other comments? If not, do we have a motion to close the public hearing on the council, the budget?
Second.
Is there probably a second? Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say ayes and ayes.
Aye.
Aye. All post same sign. Those are two main things we need to get checked out first.
Adjust.
Thank you. We'll go to my assistant. She's got some handouts that's in front of you.
The first one we'll talk about is on its two pages. That's the budget summaries. So the twenty-four one hasn't changed much. There's a little bit of shift in some revenues after analyzing your year-to-date information. Some of those went up, but the budgets are the same, other than I haven't seen any additional appropriations come in. But those really haven't changed much. There have been some changes in the information for the second page, the twenty-two five information. So, of course, the day after we met last time, the DLGF released the lit public safety and lit certified shares estimates for next year. I noted those at the bottom of the page. So we have them now included in revenue. So your certified shares estimate is now thirteen million two thirty-two six fifty-six for the county for next year. It's up six point six percent over the twenty-twenty-four amount. Public safety is now seven million one fifty-three four hundred twelve dollars. Also, six, well, over six point, uh, six percent up over twenty-four. And then there's a new number there for jail lit that's included, ten million, uh, two hundred ninety-two dollars. That's an eleven point three percent increase because you are the only unit that receives that jail lit. Other than other two types, certified shares and public safety, are divided up against amongst other units in the county. So that's why your increase is less because other units are pulling in part of that. So the overall amount probably went up eleven point two percent. Your share went up six percent year-over-year.
And those are all basically on the income tax.
Yes, those are, that's all income tax, that's all the income tax dollars, yes. That where people work, it comes back to Boone County and it gets divided based upon the proportion of levy. So that's again, the certified shares and public safety. Your other counties may have a lot of levy, similar to or larger than yours, so it's, it's shared amongst everyone in the county. Whereas the third type is not. We already knew that max levy growth was certified at four percent for this year. The general fund budget number at the top includes a one hundred thousand dollar contingency and personal services. When we published the Form Three, Debbie and I discussed that because we didn't have the line item complete. We didn't know what might come up. So there is some, a little bit of extra room aside from the individual lines that have been entered currently. So that can be pulled out at the end for adoption. If you have to use it, it's there to use. But the number at the top, the budget does include that additional one hundred thousand dollars. Net assessed values increased almost fourteen percent this year. So we have recalculated the amounts of revenue for the CCD fund and the Kew Bridge fund based upon that new net assessed value. So the Kew Bridge was a standard raised up earlier this year, if you remember, at the rate of point oh two two eight. So that's why we're now showing increased revenues in the Kew Bridge fund over previous numbers, as well as increased amounts in the CCD fund. So that's where some of those additionals came from. We also have included in the current receipts for the general fund, the potential three-year levy growth appeal. The second item I handed out to you is the calculation of that three-year appeal. We can go over that and I'll explain it, it's a single page, but it's printed front and back. So if you look at the first page, the one that's kind of printed, the portrait orientation, longways, says that three-year growth excess levy appeal civil at the top. The appeal calculation takes into account net assessed values from twenty-twenty-one to twenty-twenty-four. And we then calculate what the county's average growth was over that time period. Not their total growth in the assessed value, but the average growth. So the county's average growth was fourteen point seven six percent, almost fifteen percent. The comparative point established by the state was a three-year average growth of eight point seven two percent. So because Boone County was more than two percent in excess of that eight point seven two, the, the bar would have been ten point seven two percent. You are eligible to apply for the appeal. Then at the bottom, we calculate how much you are actually eligible for. So we take that fourteen point seven six percent, they're not gonna allow you to grow on it twice. So we pull out the four percent that you're currently already receiving levy growth this year. So you're only gonna get anything over and above that four percent. So you have ten point, almost ten point seven six percent over eligible to add to your current levy. So we start with the levy amount that was the beginning of the calculation for this year, which is that eleven million seven forty oh eight seven. That's the total max levy that you had, that was the base for your calculations for levy this year. If you add ten percent of that levy, that amount is one million two sixty-three two thirty-three. When we divide that by the NAV for this year, the nine million two seven, nine billion, I'm sorry, two hundred seventy-six million eighty-one thousand eight hundred fifty-nine, that indicates that that would add an additional rate, or add two-year rate in a little over one cent or point oh one three six. So it's not making great jump in your rate. The second page shows what is happening with the rate. So we start out, we've got the here's the first of what the twenty-twenty-four approved rate was. Your rate this year is point one nine three oh. That was where you agreed last year, it was, I believe, equivalent to the year, okay, this year's rate. So this year, you took enough of your currently approved levy appeal to get you to point one nine three oh. The second line, sort of the orange bar at the top, is if you don't take the current three-year appeal that you may be eligible for, but you take the rest, the remainder of that appeal that was approved from last year. So because your net assessed value grew by almost fourteen percent, levies grew by four percent, you're seeing a drop in the rate. It would drop to one, uh, point one seven five seven if you do nothing further. If you just take the remainder of the appeal amount that you had last year. We show the Kew Bridge amount at the full reestablished rate. You have CCD in there at the new reestablished, or the rate that it's currently been at in the past few years. Your rate would be point one seven five seven for next year. If we go to the next step over, that assumes that you, again, take the remainder of last year's appeal that was left over. Plus, you are granted the appeal for the incoming year. Like I said, it's gonna add, you know, point oh one three six cents. So that new rate would be point one eight nine four for twenty-twenty-five, which is less than your current rate of point one nine three oh. So I guess there's some rounding problem there. It says the difference of the twenty-twelve, twenty-twenty-five estimates is point oh one three seven. But that is, because here I broken it down by the individual fund, the other was a lump sum calculation. So you can see if, now, it was like, I think I may have mentioned before, I'm not sure, on the, the DLGF is being a little hardcore on the three-year appeals this year. They made a, took a lot of pains in the emails that were sent out, that they're gonna analyze the applications that are sent in very closely for need for, you know, what are your available resources, why are you not using available resources, why do you need this resource? So it's very important to have the projects, as I heard you discuss earlier, you're always planning for this, have the projects that you needed for lined out, give cost, approximate cost, why you've not done that so far, those kind of items. So there's never a guarantee that you'll get the three-year appeal, but if you're eligible, you know, take advantage of that and apply. Again, like last year, if you come to the decision that you wanna see more of the decrease in your rate for twenty-five, the same rules apply as last year. You don't have to levy for the full amount of the appeal, even if you are pretty poor.
Are they trying to meet the threshold, like are they trying to hit, hey, we only want to approve so much?
That I don't know, because last year, there were quite a few that were approved. It did not specifically say in their memo, we are only going to approve five percent or X number of appeals. It did not say that. But they just progressively, it used to be a foregone conclusion, if you were eligible, you got it.
Yeah.
In the past three to four years, there's been a lot more question asking during the review process, a lot more requirements. We used to only have to provide information on certain funds, like your lit public safety, your general fund, anything you see, receive property tax for. Now they're wanting revenue information on everything. They wanna look at your total revenues. They're asking for more detailed support. So I, we have not been advised that they have set a threshold. They may have that in the back of their mind, that they're meeting a threshold.
Yeah.
But we know that, I don't know for sure that they are.
So when there's an appeal, locally, that there's a rubric that the state says that so-and-so meets all of these check marks, then the appeal's granted?
It's a, it's a very individualized basis anymore. Whereas it used to be, like I said, a little bit more blanket. Now it's very much, they may, you know, for example, if Zionsville implies to, they may approve you, but not Zionsville, or vice versa. Or they may approve a small township's appeal, but they may not approve a county or a larger unit's appeal. It just depends on the needs of it, and probably, they'll take into account maybe how many past appeals you've had. You know, where you, where you are, rainy day fund or investment fund-wise relative to everything else. They probably will also look at how well you've planned for things. You know, you've recently put a capital plan in place as a county. So they may take, you know, since you've done the work to look at that, they may consider that as positive. You know, you, you've got something there to kind of back your numbers up, you've looked at things. So anything you can think of to, to support your case will be important to include in the application.
So can, can they resubmit a second time and a third time and a fourth time?
You can do it as many, you can, any year that you're eligible, you can apply. There are some units that have applied each of the last eight or nine years and have received it each of the last eight or nine years, depending upon the area and how quickly it's growing. Some areas never are eligible because their growth is so slow that they can never reach the threshold set by the state. So.
Was last year the first year we were eligible?
As far as I know, I don't know when you were ever eligible, if you had ever been eligible before.
At least.
As long as I worked with the county, it was the first year.
That's, well, at least in six years, six prior years, I don't think we had qualified.
Is there a body above the DLGF? Probably not, that ever goes back and says, hey, we wanna take a look and make sure that, you know, that we're not just seeing you do arbitrary favors granted. And again, not that they would, but.
Yeah. There is not.
The governor.
But it's up to the state legislature to define the process.
Okay. Okay.
So like this year, for example, there was originally a piece of legislation introduced where that threshold would now be, need statewide growth by four percent instead of two. Four percent would have drastically cut the number of units eligible. You would still have been eligible as a county. That piece of legislation ended up dying because it was attached to something else that died.
Okay.
But I would, we don't know exactly what the incoming legislature will do, but they, they attempt to influence the process by doing something like that.
Was there a report issued every year that shows who got, who didn't get, who applied, who didn't?
Not that I am aware of.
I would think that would be.
I know that there was an article in a newspaper last year about all of the units in the state that received.
Okay.
And I think that was done via public information request. Like, as far as just a report from the DLGF on who applied, who received, I'm not aware of anything.
Thanks.
Nothing like that, but I know us.
I mean, we're going through the process now. I'm working with Debbie and Kenny on just our application and just making it as strong as possible. And I'm, in the back of my mind, I'm thinking like, is there this, kind of what Sherri's saying, is there this arbitrary, like, hey, we only want to approve so many and do X, Y, Z?
Unfortunately, and I, and I don't know if they would tell us if there was.
Oh, they would, they'd say whatever.
Yeah, I don't think they would, maybe there's only fifteen available.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna say that, but.
I mean, if there was, I would just be like, who am I competing against?
Yeah, I mean, and I think they're gonna look at each individual unit too. I mean, you have significant growth going on, you have significant new net assessed value, not just current existing net assessed value. So that's, I think, maybe part of the consideration too as well, but mostly, it's, they're just wanting a very thorough, well-thought-out, that's what they're application.
I'm gonna have some of the, I mean, I'm not anybody that wants to have some of the council, whoever puts eyes on it as well, obviously, even before we send it in, like, hey, the vote is.
So the, the next step of the process would be at your adoption meeting, probably in October, to make the formal vote to go ahead and proceed with submission of the petition. And then there's a document that needs to be signed and submitted. We're putting together the financial information, if you think, you know, if you're gonna go ahead and go with the financial information, and everything has to be in the DLGF by the twenty-first, even though your budget will technically could be adopted earlier than that. This information doesn't have to be until the twenty-first.
Debbie, when's that, when was that, did you say?
Twenty-first.
What, first, okay.
About October.
The DLGF report says that it's Saturday.
Okay.
About October.
Yeah, there's a, there's an email that says the year's twenty-first too, they put the wrong date on there. Because it's always like the eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-first in that area.
Okay.
But you have plenty of time up to the eighth, so by the end of that week, you can get it in, so. That was all the information I brought for you today, council. So if I don't have any questions about, I think, but questions on the three-year or any of the other estimates I showed you on the cash flow summaries.
So any questions for Susan? Debbie, Louise?
Uh, I have one on public safety. This is for Sue and Debbie. I know we went over this last time on public safety, what's this, hold up? There's three hundred thousand.
No, we didn't agree on it. It's in both places.
That's why, it's holding in two spots.
We left it.
Okay, that's why.
It's, it's still in two places.
Okay.
So that will make a difference on your eleven seventy.
Okay.
It'll actually be in the positive if we leave it in jail lit.
Sounds very good. And then food and beverage.
We cleared out most of it, but there's still some.
There's still some that we need to discuss.
What's hefty in twelve, what's hefty in the one fifty-seven, sorry?
With what?
What's the, what's the, what's the big in food and beverage?
You're kind of ahead of the game, Mr. Williams.
Is that because of resolving this year's food and beverage issue?
Because something was like, so, okay, all right. I knew public safety was the, what about that?
And then we also have some, a couple other things to approve in there. We haven't yet talked about four H, which is in there, which is a hundred and twenty, thirty thousand, something like that.
I like, in our last meeting, a lot of this was read, we cleared out a majority of it.
You cleared a lot of things.
Yeah, okay, I'm good. Dan, John?
We're ready to, to move on into the budget. If we have any questions for Susan, I'm sure she'll straighten it out if we give, going the wrong direction again a little bit. But we'll start with a Kew Bridge. And we'll start with, yeah, and kind of go over just projects in Kew Bridge. I, I did call Nick a little bit to go over some of them, so we just wanna go back over and make sure that we have in Kew Bridge is what Nick also needs in Kew Bridge, so. I've kind of got a list of bridges, we will start with my list and have to.
Any more questions, all right?
Okay.
Kew Bridge is eleven thirty-five.
And we'll see the main calculation based upon net assessed value added off this one, fifty thousand dollars to levy support.
It helped you.
Yeah, it, it gave more revenue towards Kew Bridge.
It took away from county job.
Yes, that's, yeah, that's the.
Nick was like, yes, why, you gotta bring that up, Kenny?
Yeah, Nick took.
R.
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 What, what line, what fund am I looking at?
Eleven thirty-five.
Eleven thirty-five.
Sorry, Nick, sorry, bring it back in perspective. All right. Okay, we're gonna start with the different bridges. Debbie, we're kind of going through the ones that they've received smart funds for, so making sure what we have in there is what is needed, that Nick's needed for the bridge two oh three, starting with bridge two oh three. You received sixty thousand for our, now, what do we need to budget? Stay with the twenty-five thousand or what?
Yeah, the twenty-five thousand, that is just an additional amount for preliminary engineering. So this is a bridge we just submitted last week for federal or state funding to the NBO, so the Metropolitan Planning Organization. So that is only for design dollars for next year. Sixty thousand wasn't ever gonna be enough to cover it.
Right.
So just did this as an additional amount to get the survey started and some of the environmental work that's gonna be needed for that project.
Also, go down to Bridge Seventy. You received ninety thousand ours, but we budgeted ninety, excuse me, forty thousand, is that right?
Correct. That is also a bridge design that is a future project that we funded with construction, or construction dollars likely to be the Kew Bridge or bond funds. So there is no agreement in place yet for Bridge Seventy for design, but we are working with a consultant. And we don't have the numbers of actually what that agreement is gonna be. The estimate was around a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So we put ninety in ARP, knowing we had to spend that on the twenty-six, and this was the additional amount to cover the rest of the engineering.
Going on down, small structures and art funds, one million and ninety thousand was put in there through the art funds, and this is budgeted for small structures, I believe, another five hundred thousand.
Yeah, the small structures have been, something's been, I'd say, were neglected, but they don't get the same focus as bridges, and they look like bridges, they're just shorter than twenty feet in span.
Okay.
There's been a significant number of years that, I'm going back to two thousand and seven, with a lot of small structures that are condition-wise needing replaced. And that doesn't include all the ones that have the concrete walls that stick up. You drive down county roads, there's concrete walls that stick up along the sides of the roads, frequently a major issue for agriculture users trying to get through them. Also, safety issues for vehicles hitting them. So what we budgeted in ARP was the ones that came up on condition ratings. And we know that we didn't vote enough for all the small structures we taken care of. This was budgeted to be able to support all of those going to construction. We're having a letting of six small structures in November. And we'll know how much of this will be dedicated to those structures, or if we'll be able to do any additional small structures. That's the purpose for it being budgeted, a much higher number than it has previously, due to the, the revenues not been available, the ARP funds being able to assist us with getting some of those taken care of. They were built in nineteen twenty, nineteen thirty, for the most part.
What's the lifespan on small structures?
Uh, depends on what it's made of, but, you know, many of them that were built in nineteen thirty did a great job in there. Some of which are still in pretty good shape, but they are very narrow and have the concrete walls. So some of them, you know, metal pipes generally last twenty-five years, but concrete structures could last a hundred years.
What, what percentage of that work do you think will be done next year?
Uh, construction, likely, a lot of those small structures will be built during the calendar year next year, or through the winter of twenty-five into twenty-six. It's good winter work for these contractors, they can fit these small projects, gravel roads, they can go out and do those in the wintertime, they don't need hot mix asphalt.
Speaking at a hundred percent of it all done?
Of this small structure amount that's in this budget and the ARP funds, it's depending on the bids. So we've allowed them to get a window that goes into twenty-six for construction, so we can get reduced costs if we put a, it has to be done by the end of twenty-five. So we don't know right now if they'll all be done in twenty-five, or if they'll drag into twenty-six. But if we can get the bigger window, we can get reduced costs for construction.
Assuming the weather is compliant.
Congratulations.
Assuming the weather is compliant, too.
Yeah, so that, that changes a lot with, with the weather, but contractors have to hold all that risk. And if we can give them a bigger window, the risk goes down or cost goes down.
Bridge two twenty-nine?
Two twenty-nine is a bridge for design. It's put in for ARP funds and supplement the ARP funds with Kew Bridge, knowing we have to spend all the ARP funds. This is a bridge replacement project that is on a twelve-month cycle. Likely, this one will be a future community crossings project. We didn't have any funds available to design it, all by twenty twenty-six for a community crossings project. It's been on the, need to be replaced for, for a number of years and using the ARP funds to supplement design.
That budgeted at eighty-five thousand, buddy?
Correct. Well, a lot of these numbers could come down as we get agreements in place. Once we get an agreement for design, that's all this money's for, we can reduce Kew Bridge if we needed to. But if we don't have it, and we get an agreement, we're gonna have to go back and do an addition. So we've tried to estimate what we think the, the design will cost using other bridges that we've designed for replacement with local funds. That's where these numbers have come from.
Bridge two eighty-five, something fifteen thousand, so.
And Bridge two eighty-five, that bridge is on two hundred south, over by the county line west of Montgomery County, another weight-rated bridge that's been on the twelve-month inspection cycle for a number of years.
That's over there at John.
It's way out west.
We hit it.
You hit it. Signs getting out of town, yeah. And this, this'll go off track a little bit, but recently, you guys have probably seen these new emergency vehicle signs that had to be placed at all of our bridges that have a weight rating. And it was a federal requirement, the state's mandating it, all of our inspectors required to make sure that they're, take pictures of them and give report after every inspection. Our bridge inspection month is September, and we have one bridge that may have to be closed because it doesn't have that sign. Somebody stole the sign and left the post, and if we don't get a sign up there in thirty days, we literally close the bridge. I'm talking about, you might have gone that way, saw somebody that did it. We didn't know you'd have to actually close the bridge, not for condition, but for a sign, if it is not.
Wow, that's.
So getting rid of these weight-rated structures is a big, is a big issue. I think it's not just Boone County, statewide, you know, that is really hammering down on our bridge inspection consultants to take pictures of them. They didn't just do a critical finding, they did a severe critical finding, and it was a lengthy email of things they had to do for a sign.
Who forces that?
That nobody literally reads and drives across the bridge.
Yeah, who forces that, yeah.
It's, it's self-enforced, so it, it's for, it's for different weight range. You have to stop at the bridge to read it, to even understand what it even says, that it's federally required. So getting rid of these bridges, I know that's a whole other story, but you close a bridge, Little Jamestown Road, in the middle of fall, I think would be a very unpopular decision for a sign. So we're trying to get rid of these.
As you can't read it, we can make a paper sign and put that in there.
Put a plate up there, take a picture.
Maybe you need to add a little line for air tag, to attach to your sign.
Where did that thing go?
Bridge one eighty-five, same, same deal.
Our one fifty-eight, yeah, that was on the, that's off, yeah, another weight-rated structure. Uh, it's on eleven Pittsburgh Blacktop South, the four hundred south, very highly traveled road. Uh, it's designed on that bridge for replacement also. Uh, many of these would be determined construction dollars in the future, but to get the design taken care of, we can do with local dollars a lot more cost effective than if we use federal dollars. And if we don't have a bridge designed, we can't get them into community crossings to get money, uh, for fifty fifty on the construction.
You know, Nick, when I see fifteen thousand dollars, is this a project that takes, not to take anything away from your hard work, just a couple of days?
No, this is all designed, so we put it in ARP. So there's a lot larger number in ARP funds for design. This is if those agreements aren't enough, we can use Q bridge to make sure we can pay the consultant to do the complete design project. So it'll take them, it could take them a year to design a project, some people probably do it in six months, depending on the complexity permitting. Uh, and then to build it will obviously be, you know, a couple, three month closure or so, actually build a bridge.
Bridge seventeen and nineteen, is there, you're using ARP, is it?
Yeah, so seventeen and nineteen, since we got the ARP funds, and I was trying to walk through some of that with Kitty and Debbie on the phone, we actually have a lot budgeted this year for seventeen and nineteen that we aren't gonna need in seventeen and nineteen. So we can do reduction of our budget in twenty twenty-four because we end up using the ARP funds. So that, that was a, a significant reduction that we could do in Q bridge.
And it was about four hundred thousand.
Could be four hundred thousand dollars, uh, that's budgeted currently, that's sitting in the lines that we do not have to use now because we have ARP funds. Um, and we are using that for the construction of those, those are under construction, budgeted for next year in seventeen and nineteen. Um, right here I had, next year I list nothing budgeted in nineteen, is that what you guys have? Seventeen also budgeted for twenty twenty-five.
So between, they can reduce twenty twenty-four as budget?
Correct, but.
Does that help with the food and beverage problem?
So the food and beverage problem, there, there's a reduction we can do over there, too, but that's not directly tied to this. There's a, there's a bridge in, in that, uh, in eleven fifty-seven also, but it doesn't help, that's a cash problem, not appropriation problem.
Did we do the reduction in the October meeting, by chance?
He comes on an additional, right, he comes as an additional, we can do a reduction in the next meeting. If you looked at what the cash balance is gonna be at the end of this year, if we did spend everything in Q bridge, it was gonna be very low. So doing those two reductions will give a four hundred thousand dollar cash balance.
Right.
So that's, that's not accounted for yet in this, right?
No, 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 no. We, I talked about it the last meeting, but we hadn't done the ARP, and didn't know for sure what the, what the project getting started, but it is now closed and is underway. We've been according to CCMG dollars and we have the ARP funds, and that's what's covering.
Is there anything running over budget for this year?
Uh, running over budget, no, that's a, we're good on appropriations.
Right.
We've got.
Oh, you've done good this year.
Well, kind of, so.
Oh, say kind of, you've done good.
He dropped the bomb on the guy, maybe lower this.
Take it, run with it.
So we're good on appropriations, there's just not enough cash.
If you took our money.
So the cash is not high enough in eleven fifty-seven, so then we need to change the appropriation in general fund to be able.
To rebalance it out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we, we've got that problem today, like we're getting invoices that we have enough appropriation but not enough cash, or we don't have enough appropriation and we have.
So the four hundred thousand dollars is a kind of a.
So this Q bridge, it helps, Q bridge may change your rate discussion, I don't know what that does. Uh, but being able to do that reduction of appropriation because of the ARP funds did help. If one of the bridges is a similar situation, the total amount is yet, not yet known, with bridge eighty-four. So it's on here, um, also budgeting next year thirty thousand dollars. Uh, that's because construction will likely carry into next year's budget. So the calendar year, we'll still be doing inspection, uh, but we were anticipating that because we don't know yet. The letting of the project was September eleventh. And the low bidder hasn't been determined by Indot yet, so there's some, we don't know the exact amount, but it is running under our estimate. And we have budgeted in this year's budget to cover, uh, some costs that ARP will now take care of. So we can probably do a reduction in bridge eighty-four, too, but it's just not known how much yet.
And you'll know that by October?
Yes, we should know that by October, Indot should be getting back with us in the next week or two to tell us how much we owe, so we can get an invoice. And then what we'll have to cover after that is just inspection, which will be an ongoing expense. With construction, we kind of check, with inspection, we actually write invoices as they do for.
So with that being said, said Debbie, uh, right now technically we're over budgeted without having these reductions?
Q bridge, you're, no, you're not over.
Okay.
Because the additional.
Because the additional stuff, because of the money he took from us.
Yeah.
He's good now, good?
Yeah.
He took it from. I don't have it anymore. She doesn't need it.
Ain't nobody getting no money, nobody getting lunch today.
That's why I'm getting your money. You took it from.
You took it.
Tony bringing us his finest bologna and cheese.
So is there, is there any other things we need to cover on Q bridge? Any questions?
Unless you have anything, Nick?
Do you have anything that you want to cover?
No, I wanted to make sure I told you about those reductions, cause I think that would help.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. And that came from, that came from what we do, AR, from ARP.
Yes, seventeen nineteen and bridge eighty-four, all those ARP projects helped the Q bridge, which should make the cash balance where it can support what we already had a budgeted for next year.
Yep. So do we need to make a motion to approve Q bridge?
You can, yes, with, along with, yes, since we just discussed it with ARP funds, I would.
Yes, so do we have a motion to approve the Q bridge?
So moved. S, I would say.
Assumed it?
With the change, or was it? With the changes, yeah. With the changes.
There are no changes.
No, it's changing this year, it's not changing this year.
Okay, yeah.
So in October, second.
Right.
Has been properly moved to the second, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say what say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign, thank you. So what, what were we talking about just a minute ago with the food and beverage?
Eleven fifty-seven.
Do you want to go ahead next, Debbie?
Sure.
Sure, she's so excited.
Sure. Food and beverage has a problem.
So you made changes to food and beverage for twenty twenty-five request. I made hopefully moved, uh, seventy fifty-three road maintenance line over to the general fund. Uh, so that reduced food and beverage request from Boone County Highway Department by the eight seventy-four, eight ninety-six seventy. The, the challenge with this one is what we do this year. Uh, with the appropriation, we still have a little over a million dollars in appropriation, but we don't have the cash to cover that appropriation. They won't have the cash by the end of the year, it's a hundred and forty thousand dollars a month, we got a few more months. It's not gonna get to cover that appropriation, but we currently have the invoices that we need to pay. So the general fund, we've been using the general fund with this current claim cycle, we got some big invoices on our paving project. Um, in chip and seal dollars, so those are going into that general fund appropriation. There's not gonna be enough in the general fund to be able to cover costs, uh, the expenses that we're currently, that we currently have that are, we're gonna pay on eleven fifty-seven with the non-approbation fee.
Radio's silent, I like to get you back.
Hey, I'm submitting invoices.
I ain't gonna pay them.
Somebody out there thought you'd be very happy.
Right. But it'll start with you, so.
You get the first phone call.
I don't know why the highway's not paying their bills.
Somebody gonna get their road halfway done, hey, stop paying the bill, Nick.
So with this fund being the way it is, the only way that, the only way you can keep paying bills is just for that appropriate form of the county.
Yeah, there has to be an additional road preservation in County General is the solution that was discussed last time. And I know that's not popular doing additional this time of year, but I don't know another avenue.
So we would have to do it in order, it's.
You could take money from rainy day.
I was about to say, that's, yeah, that's literally.
Or save an additional.
We did it for rainy day, we wouldn't have to do it.
That's, that's a big additional to do at the end of the year.
How much is in rainy day?
Almost five.
Yeah, four points, four and something. How much have we got, how much would you do if we did that rainy day, how much would you recommend we did there?
How much you go?
How much do you need? Just like asking a kid when they're born out for the weekend.
No, it's what's appropriated, so what's appropriated in road preservation is a million dollars left in the appropriation in eleven fifty-seven.
Are you gonna spend all that this year?
Yeah, right now we've got the invoices to spend a significant amount of that, uh, and chip and seal is still currently happening.
What's the amount?
It's a million dollars, it's a million and thirty-four is what was left after this claims cycle was just submitted yesterday.
That's, 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 how much is in rainy day?
Almost five.
So we want to take twenty percent now.
Can we replace it?
Yes.
But in general, just take one.
Yeah.
Well, rainy day cleans it up, so you don't have to have an additional, if you put something in this budget process, we have to put something back in.
I just want to make sure we did that.
So basically, if we took it out of rainy day this year, we would take a dollar.
I mean, we don't have to use that terminology. That sounds.
Oh, we're pretty, we're pretty basic. That's what we're doing.
We go rob John and pay Dean. I mean, I.
John's on favor.
I mean, it's, i- i- in essence, it would knock down our operating balance.
So, right, but let's get back to this food and beverage. Obviously, if it's only bringing in a hundred, twelve thousand dollars.
Uh, that was what was discussed last time.
We've got to make sure that we don't over budget for twenty-five also.
And that's why you reduced, you reduced the request, maybe moved over to general fund, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. The last time, so it wasn't over budgeted for next year.
Debbie, food and beverage, we receive every month or every?
We receive it every month and it, and it varies, so like, we just received, um, September and it was only like eighty-three thousand dollars. Last month it was a hundred and fifty thousand, so I mean, it, it just varies every month.
Cause our, our.
People couldn't eat.
Our initial cash balance in that account was six eighty-seven. Do we, I mean, do we need to do it right now?
Oh, the claims that we just, we took that down.
Oh, so that's.
That's probably not, is that, are you looking at the last budget status you received, which has been like beginning?
Eight thirty-one, yeah.
Yeah, we had, we discussed with Debbie on what we could actually submit out of there with this current claims cycle. We have one point two million dollar invoice for.
Oh, so this six eighty-seven is gone, okay.
Debbie, I have written in my notes from like of August, uh, one point six million expected to come into the food and beverage in twenty twenty-five. Did I write that correctly?
That's what we estimate, but that varies depending on, I mean, it's food and beverage, so people don't eat out, you know, receive those dollars. Today's balance is five hundred and seventeen thousand.
Okay, so five seventeen, that, that hasn't been paid?
They haven't paid the claims from Monday.
They were just submitted yesterday.
Got it, got it.
Yeah, he still has the one point seven, uh, left to spend in the fund.
But you, the claims Monday are like one point two.
Yeah, we, one claim by itself was one point two, and there's, after yesterday's claims, we have one million and thirty-four thousand left in that appropriation.
So, so, I mean, it's important that we take.
I was just hoping we could.
Jennifer, Jennifer's trying to like, like, it's like posting the check, right, David.
You can't get around the gentleman.
No, I know, I know, I just was looking at, my number was at the August thirty-first.
We care about our roads and we're doing this, but what we have to pull out rainy day for next year and plus this day, and, you know, we're looking at basically one point eight million dollars.
It's a chunk.
That, we're, we're taking out of our, but.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as we put it back into.
Yes, I think we need to make sure that.
With the four hundred thousand reduction in Q bridge, make general fund be that much, would it change that rate for next year's Q bridge rates?
We're, we're not changing next year's Q bridge rates.
No, because there's a reduction, you talked about it was taking it away from general fund, would that make general fund be a higher amount in twenty-five?
I mean, yeah, if you don't levy up for C, for Q bridge up to that full, up to the point two to eight, then it leaves it in County General. So it would give you more cash levy coming in next year in County General. I mean, you, you can take it up to point two-two or point two-oh or whatever, you don't have to take the full amount. You're, you've established it a couple of times and it keeps kind of dropping down, but that's your decision as counsel, too, I mean, stolen from you. We take it back, we're, so.
Sorry, Nick.
That's what, I guess I was going with that story, the Q bridge reduction does help the general fund, there's not paying for general fund to have more.
It's about four in July.
So the ARP, not using ARP on those bridges.
The money's for seven in August, okay, I thought they were.
You actually understand, that's good.
Do, we, I feel like we used to get something that showed us what we received each month. I'm just curious how that compares to years past, like is August generally low, cause kids are going back to school or?
We can look.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I mean, I can hold the ledger receipts.
Okay.
So it needs a point two, so far this year.
So trying to get a good, about one, I need for the end of the year.
You need about one point two to finish.
Is that estimating what we're gonna receive for October, November, December, or no?
No.
Okay.
No. So say you get another idea, three hundred thousand, four hundred maybe.
How much have we received so far this year?
Four point two seven.
So with that being said, so we need somewhere around the million, thirty-four thousand is what, what Nick's saying. Uh, it sounds like it, it's gonna be a little bit more than that, but with what's coming in, we should be, we should be. Yes, that'd be the bare minimum.
But if it snows tomorrow, will these projects get done?
I don't think it's eight to more.
So do you think we'll get, do you think we'll get about another three? Do you think we'll receive about another three hundred and seventy-five thousand then for September, October, November, December, or?
You'll be able to use December's money to spend this year.
Right, right. So four, I meant, I meant September, it's way October, October, you know, for November, do you think we'll get about three seventy-five, four hundred? I was averaging what we.
So, we see so far.
So do we need a motion to, uh?
I'll contact them, like, maybe I'll go a little bit more, just because of how much we have in our operating balance, like, what's the difference?
Can we take back from food and beverage, like, let's say we?
Well, it's, it's a fund, so it's a non-recurring fund, so it stays in that fund. If you're gonna, you can, and you can't loan or borrow from that fund, so, yeah. So you have to actually take those profits.
So we need approximately a million and thirty-four thousand out of the rainy day fund to fund next project.
But it's not accounting for the maybe three fifty to four hundred right or so.
No, that was not accounted.
So that's what I was trying to account for, so we don't.
Or you take the million out of the reserve, the cash reserve in County General.
Million, and then just.
Like you did the window project for this year that hasn't gotten done yet?
Okay.
I, I have down, down here on my notes, highway six hundred thousand dollars shore has a, this is August of twenty twenty-four. Uh, this gap needs to be filled, and then I had in my notes probably from County General is what I have on. And you're talking about maybe the rainy day fund?
Well, one of those two. I mean, it's.
Yeah, County General, I mean, that's basically where you have the extra.
If we pay for rainy days, we can do that now.
I was about to say, you can do it now.
But then we just have to move money to.
I mean, I would hope you could replace that here.
So if we move a million?
Or just a million, we all don't get thirty-four thousand. We need to move at least a million, I would say. You agree, Nick?
Uh, yeah, those are items we gotta pay.
I mean, you, you know you gotta pay that.
We gotta pay, we got contracts and projects are on.
Debbie, which is the best, best place to take it out of?
To pay them now would be, I think rainy day.
Is that?
It'd be my opinion.
But what amounts that we're not over, uh, funding?
What line are we gonna?
We'll have, we'll make a new line, we'll pay it out of rainy day, so we'll just make a new line in rainy day.
It doesn't have line for reservation.
Uh, rainy day's not in there. Karen, I think it's calling, I pulled up a look.
I'm getting ready to email everybody that's received. Uh, rainy day, please, thank you, receipts?
No, just. Just as an aside, you can only fund rainy day from your general fund.
Oh, okay.
So you can't like take, if you end up with three or four hundred thousand in food and beverage, you can't move that to rainy day.
Right, that's why I don't want to, that's why I don't want to put the full one point, whatever it is, I was trying to account for, maybe we'll get somewhere between three fifty and four hundred for September, October, November.
You're better off just, I mean, it's done now, yeah, so, yeah, I mean, that, that'll just stay in there for next year.
Maybe something you can take out of general fund and leave in route food and bread for food and beverage next year, you know, something like that, because I don't even, the way the timing's gonna work, I'm not gonna be able to do an exact payback.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you could reduce road preservation. Well, you could reduce road preservation next year in general fund, and increase it in one point fifty seven, so then you'd have the same, same amount, but you'd be able to move, because now there'd be more cash in there to use.
Right. Okay. Okay.
Than what we anticipated, we have that one point six for next year, if it gets another three or four hundred thousand dollars, you could take that and increase that appropriation and decrease it in general fund.
Okay.
So we have a motion? Uh, let's, let me see, the motion is move, is it a million thirty four thousand?
Or, or a million, it, it depends on how, whatever you guys wanna do, the, cause I, like you said, there is gonna be some money coming in, I, I get that too.
So let's, let's first look at his lines that he has in food and beverage.
For next year?
Cause we'll, yeah, we'll need to know the amounts that you wanna keep in food and beverage.
For this year or for next year?
Next year.
Next year, you already, you already moved eight seventy four, eight ninety six, seventy out.
Keep all of them?
Right.
Anticipated that to go to general, I don't know if the appropriation went figure in general by that amount.
Are we leaving equipment at five hundred?
So the, if you remove the amount for road preservation, that brings the total that we were gonna use out of eleven fifty seven down to a number that you came to last time, I don't know what that was.
We have a million four hundred sixty.
One million four hundred sixty thousand without, we take out the eight seventy four.
Right.
So then what, I guess, are you asking, what's the other appropriation requests in eleven fifty seven for next year?
Yes, cause we haven't discussed any of those lines, so we, let's.
So you just wanna know what line?
Let's, let's approve his lines for next year.
First, and then figure out what line to put it in?
Yes.
Okay.
Would we approve them as is and then come back in January once we know all food and beverage ended?
And reduce it?
Yeah.
We can reduce, yeah, you can do a reduction of appropriation at any time, at any meeting.
Okay.
It didn't matter, we can increase it and reduce it generally, so if you were, it has more money at the end.
Yeah, it's like if we do the full one point, whatever it is now, it's not accounting for us receiving anything this, this year.
And being grown big. General, this money.
And then you could reduce, yeah, so you could reduce the general, reduce the general fund request and increase, but it'd be doing an additional in eleven fifty seven and a reduction in one thousand.
Yeah, okay.
So, what line do we take out of eleven fifty seven now?
Um, it was, yeah, road maintenance.
Seventy fifty three.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you, do you want to, you wanna go through all of them one by one, Debbie, in approval?
Well.
We need to look at them, because there's three.
So we're gonna look at, so seven oh three five, which is equipment, it's got five hundred thousand in there.
Yeah, funds the equipment replacement drug grant, uh, very specific equipment.
We, that one, yeah, we're good with that one.
Yeah, and then the other one is.
Safety.
Safety projects, our, uh, striping project goes to letting next year, uh, anticipating it to be ninety ten, so we got, it's federal dollars, we can pay the markings where they don't currently exist. And this line would be funding our, our match for construction and construction inspection.
Seven oh five four?
That is line seven oh five.
And the next one is.
Gravel road conversions, seven oh five five, and.
For three hundred now.
Request is three hundred thousand dollars for twenty twenty five.
I guess.
So your, is your idea to take the million and put it into one of these lines or to create a new line?
No, you're, so, these are for next year.
Right.
Let's just do next year, we'll do twenty four after we're done with this.
Oh, we're just doing it for today. Yeah. Okay, alright, I got you, okay.
So you, cause y'all were a little confused.
Yeah.
If, um, maybe if instead of reducing next year, what if it's put towards gravel conversions and we just, it's a one time thing? Cause we have a lot of, we have so many people coming in front of us asking us to convert gravel roads.
But, I mean, the main thing is, whatever we're gonna approve in this budget, we do that, and then, like Debbie said, go back and, and fix last year's budget.
Okay.
So, as long as we budget less coming into this, this time, cause we, we got fair, you, four H fair and use the loan, there's twenty five thousand's coming down here, and also.
Ambulance?
The ambulance service, which ten thousand, no.
So eleven thousand of the twenty is with him?
And nine thousand is Marion Township.
Correct.
So, and that's been very standard for the last few years.
Nine thousand, Marion Township.
So, so, and then we also got, uh, with kind of the economic development was in this line also, so.
Does your one point four million include all of those fair EDC, so that, so, if you're anticipating getting to be one point eight million next year, and budgeting one point four million, so it's already gonna show a cash balance at the end of next year?
Yes.
With the numbers that are currently listed, excluding road preservation?
Yeah, that's what she misses. So, the last meeting in August, you discussed a hundred fifty five thousand for EDC, we keep you that the same?
Did we approve that?
We approved it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you can still make changes.
Yes, you can still change anything you want.
You can change anything you want, it's not set, it's good.
Jenny, I, again, in my notes back in August, I have a hundred fifty five thousand out of different funds, auditor will keep the council informed, so the, the different funds.
For EDC?
Well, that's what I have in my notes.
Yeah, that's what I have.
Yeah.
What happened again, I'm sorry, Kevin, what did you?
The, uh, the EDC line, uh, back on August, I have written a hundred fifty five thousand out of different funds, auditor will keep the council informed.
If you wanted to move it to county general, was there a way to be special?
But we will really need to do that, if we've got these moved around this budget, with what's in here now, uh, with what we have already moved out, we, we, we're good with approving this fund.
Yes.
As long as everyone's okay with, uh, the economic development at that price, uh, ambulance service and four H fair and use at the, the twenty five thousand. Is there any, are there any changes to any of those that anybody wants to bring up? If not, do we want to make a motion to approve that with the changes that was, well, the only change that we made was last month, taking out the eight hundred seventy four thousand.
And increasing EDC to one fifty five?
Correct.
We approved that, yeah, I make a motion that we approve eleven seventy fi, uh, eleven, sorry, fifty seven, um, as presented, but also with the changes made last month, which was moving road maintenance to county general, and increasing thirty one fifty one to a hundred fifty five thousand.
I'll second it, it's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say my same eye?
Aye.
Aye. All those same side? Okay, uh.
So before we move on, let's discuss this for current year, twenty twenty four. Are you wanting to move a million thirty four dollars out of rainy day, or you can just pay, allow, allocate it for another day? Or take it from the reserve, just like you did last year with the window project?
And just so we're clear, you're saying it's easier on you and your staff process wise to move out of rainy day?
And then move from our reserve back to rainy day?
To rainy day?
No, create a line and let it be out of rainy day.
I'm sorry, create a line, okay, out of rainy day.
Create a line, pay to rainy day, but, but then move from reserve to.
And then hopefully, yes, and then hopefully, when we're done in October, we go to adopt, you can move that amount into rainy day.
We actually do that outside of the budget, because they, since they don't look at it until you have an ordinance saying that you're gonna do it, so it'd be like at the end of the year, you're gonna do your balances, and then the ordinance to the end.
I'm game for that, the rainy day. Is that okay? Are you all okay with that? Mm-hmm. John?
So, so we need to make a motion to create a line in, in rainy day, uh.
It's easiest to do.
One million thirty four thousand.
Easiest to follow.
Yeah.
We'll do the additional next month.
Cause it's to advertise it, right?
We have to advertise it all.
Yes, we'll have to advertise it, cause we'll move it from the cash balance in rainy day into a separate line that Nick can then pay out of.
So we really don't need a motion at this meeting for that, or?
Yeah, just so that we know it was approved and we can move forward.
Okay.
Yeah.
Needs to be done.
Is there a motion to, uh, move a million and, and create a line in rainy day to, uh, fund that?
Second?
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, say my same eye?
Aye.
So Nick, if you had an extra four hundred thousand, how many, and we're giving you three hundred thousand next year for gravel road, so if you have seven hundred, how many roads could you convert next year?
Uh, depends on how long they are, so we got a scoring matrix, you have to look and see which one, probably another road or two, if it's a longer road, you deal probably maybe one, but if it's a couple of shorter roads or a mile or less, you can maybe get two more around the week you convert.
What if she asked, do you have a, I know you have like the, the payers, uh, scale, that kind of tells you where roads are, then the ranking system? Like, if you took that, you're like to do it now, but if you said, hey, if you put like another line next, so to say, if, if I got X amount of dollars, this is where it would get me down the list, just share that later?
Yeah, we have all the spreads, you know what the cost is, it's just a lot of, a lot of roads, so I usually don't like print it all, but, all the way over to one side says, here's what they rank, here's what they would cost, and here's how much, you know, it would cost to do if we went this far, how far, what money runs out.
Okay. Just, yeah.
Planning to include road conversions in bond fund project list too, so if we have remaining bond funds, we're doing a small structure, we can go do a gravel road conversion also, similar to what we did previously on bond projects.
That's great.
We can leverage more dollars, get more bridges for community crossings and federal dollars and eat bond funds, and that'll allow more money available for gravel and personal stuff.
Okay, we're gonna move to CCD me.
I only have one line in CCD, so.
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty.
Yeah, it's just equipment. It's on the second page at the top, one point four.
I had that we approved that on each.
We did.
Okay.
So anything else in there, we, somebody else.
Somebody else, yeah.
So what do we?
What line is it?
That, it's, he only has one line in CCD, you guys already approved it, and it was for, uh, new equipment.
Oh.
So do we, anything with it?
So, we got the rest of the.
We're done with Nick as far as, like, for now. Forever.
We might have to come back and reevaluate something.
We have that special relationship, you know, deep down, I do care about you.
Yeah.
Deep, not down there.
Deep.
It's deep.
So deep.
So CCD, we need to kinda go through there, the rest of it, and we, as we just discussed, we did approve Nick's line out of CCD.
There's just a few names, yes, um, we really didn't discuss any of the buildings, um, like the prosecutor building, it looks like he's asking for twenty five thousand dollars in there, um.
I have twenty six.
Twenty six?
Is it twenty six?
Yeah, twenty six.
Yeah, twenty six, um, it looks like he still has seventy five percent of that budget coming from this year, so.
This is max?
Max.
Um, the, the links in CCD.
Max.
It's line zero zero four three.
I feel like we asked about that, I can't remember what we said, but there was some, I kept thinking something totally different, yeah.
I don't remember at all, I don't have those.
So on the.
Twenty six thousand.
Okay.
Is what he's asking for the prosecutor's building?
Can you see, so in twenty three, he spent twenty?
Twenty six thousand.
Cause wasn't there something where it's, I hate at the end of the year or something?
Mister prosecutor, I see, I see that you're on the line, is there something that you know of that needs to be done to your building that you're aware of, or the maintenance staff that they're doing?
Yeah, not, not the. Is he?
He's, he's muted, but.
Oh, he's muted?
He's probably got.
Oh, he, he's trying to talk.
Hold on, Kim.
Oh, he was, he was even gracious enough to come over here, we can hear you. Yeah.
Alright, um, I am not aware of any outstanding maintenance thing that needs to be done at this time, um, I'm sorry, I can be more helpful.
No worries, we'll scrap it, thank you so much for the time today. Alright, thank you, sir.
Thanks, Cam.
Should we try to get, should we try to get Max later and maybe do the other items like IT and?
Alright.
IT and?
Yeah, so we're gonna skip prosecutor building, annex building, and jail building, cause those are max. Um, my question, I had another question, if you go up to that first paragraph, the very last one, long range capital plan, we did discuss that, but I guess I just have questions as that continued updates. I thought we paid for that, so I don't know why we're budgeting another twenty five thousand.
That's, so I asked about that in the last meeting, and said the same thing, I thought we were done with that.
I did too, so I don't know why we're.
Yeah.
Have another twenty five thousand in there.
It, it might have just been missed, is it, um?
It was that, Sherri didn't you have with that project?
Yeah, I don't.
Cause that, cause we paid for it this year, and I didn't know if that was for updates?
Is that, the, that's our financial one?
No, this is the, this is the, uh, buildings and the facilities.
Oh. Meaning, the commissioners?
Yes, yeah. Do they, what do the?
I mean, are they gonna do like yearly updates worth of twenty five thousand dollars? I, I just don't understand why.
Yeah, hey, Donnie?
Donnie?
Yeah, um, the long range capital plan out of the, um, what fund is it, CCD?
Yes, CCD.
Yeah, we've got twenty five thousand allocated in there, is that something that the commissioners had requested? What was that for?
Well, yes, I'll say, yes, we did request it, just trying to look at the, what was that, what line?
It's, it's line, um, zero zero, zero zero one.
Zero one.
Yeah. It's first page. Uh-huh. Yeah, halfway down, it's at the break. Just above the break.
Oh, Laura's over.
I just have a check mark, I don't have.
I, I remember, I remember when I presented, like, coming along ranks, I asked, I asked about updates.
It's a max question.
Is it a?
Oh, it's a max, okay.
Laura's coming over.
I guess it's a max question, Donnie. Dan, Laura, Laura's coming over to answer.
I'm looking through here.
Okay. Okay. Hey, Donnie, did you hear what she just said? Laura's, Laura's coming over to answer too.
Okay, there, then I won't bother you with my answer. Cause I'm looking through here and I cannot find that line.
Okay.
So while we're waiting on Lori and Max, let's discuss software of eighty five thousand dollars versus NeoGo.
Laura.
Oh, Lori, I need to check this voice.
I'm sorry.
The software for NeoGo of eighty five thousand, and that goes, uh, that goes up.
We're married.
That goes up, that goes up five thousand a year, it's a three year contract of Neo, but NeoGo, am I right?
NeoGo.
Software nine oh two one, NeoGo.
Software maintenance. Um, I think that's where the, they store the records for the prosecutor's office.
So, we got a question on, on NeoGo, whether we keep funding it, so.
Is this the last year of the contract?
This is the last year right now.
For eighty five?
Yes.
But it, it's, it goes up to ninety?
I think, yeah, I think it starts at eighty five, ninety, ninety five, and, so, also, you know, I, as, as well as, uh, I. HR knows that I have not been too much in favor of it, just because of the cost, it seems like extravagant, extravagant cost, uh, for the NeoGo, so, you know, I, I'm of the opinion that, uh, we need to do away with it, so, that's, that's where I would stand, I don't know if Aaron has something to add to that or not.
Uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Byer reached out about it on, so, I remember Commissioner Byer about the, he's working on this budget as well, he wants to put a pause on it for a year as well, he has other items, but he wants to put a pause on it because of the cost, it runs on average about ninety thousand dollars a year, I think HR's on board, two to three people a month, I don't know Debbie, how many people you guys are doing, what payroll?
Most of it lately has been sheriff's department, so I mean, onboarding, you're doing most of the onboarding things, as far as the department, but.
On board.
Okay. Okay, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know. Okay, I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know. So Renzo Val, he looked at, he said it's gonna cost about ninety thousand dollars a year on average, he, he mentioned on pausing it just because of the cost alone, so for the next three years, it'll cost about two hundred and seventy to two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to do it.
But what are we giving up? I mean, what, what does NeoGov do?
So when you come on, from what he said, when you come on board, you get a, a link and it does the, fill out the paperwork for onboarding, so your, it's kind of like your, I guess, W twos and, and I don't know.
Yeah, W four, uh.
So all the forms that are needed to onboard an employee?
Isn't there a component of it though that handles, um, like confidential information as well, like employee?
I don't know, I don't use it.
Yeah, I think that's, there's a component of it that.
All data is entered into that and, and can only be looked at by the HR, any of the personal data.
But there's also data that isn't, I can't tell you it's not, what should I say, a hundred percent, because nobody looks at it physically, so we have had, in the last, what, three, two or three months, we've had a lot of bank issues, because we're not getting the right information. When people fill those forms out, maybe they miss key, they do something and nobody's confirming that for us or providing paperwork to confirm the, uh, account numbers, so, and there's missing information, so personally, I don't use it in my office, but.
I guess my whole take on it too is, tool, pay ninety thousand dollars for a tool, it's an onboard.
I just wanted to speak on our capabilities, um, so it's not just onboarding, um, sorry, I'm always wanna do public.
Don't be nervous.
It's not just onboarding, but like, so we're getting motion through it this year, there's continued, um, courses that department heads can assign, we've had a lot of feedback from department heads and elected officials that the, this has streamlined the hiring process. Uh, we get everything, like, it, we do the initial like sending and then it notifies IT that this person needs this access, notifies facilities that they need the key, like, so it, it is an onboarding tool, but there is more capabilities than just that. Um, there's also other parts to it that we're holding off on, um, as far as the direct deposit stuff goes, yes, there has been issues, um, but it's also not just us not verifying it, it's also getting passed through other offices, so, and that can happen on paper. I mean, it's not just, you know, that, and I think that it's also a more secure way and it's easier for, really, it is easier when you have it coming in just one way, and then we're giving it, you know, and sending it out, and, you know, the auditor's office has access to be able to log in and pull the forms that they need and verify the, you know, paperwork that, that they need, but then there's also stuff that, you know, only they can see, only we can see, so there's also limited access and not everybody's just able to, you know, log in as a department head and see personal information.
Okay, Debbie, is there a reason that you're not using?
The sheriff's department has not used this and we've had several issues with them, um, I don't use it because for a whole year I had, um, login problems, I could never access the PDFs, I don't have time to ask them about it.
I have a question, it looks like the contract was signed in the middle of twenty twenty-two, so if it's three years?
We've already paid the last month.
So, but it'll go, the contract will go through next summer, right?
Maybe the middle of the year.
Middle of the year, maybe, I don't know.
And it's my understanding that, um, we could like bundle different services, so are there, is it possible to come back and tell us like which ones you absolutely need still?
Yeah, I'm sure that you may do that.
Okay.
I'm in support of it, and I'll make the comparison, a, a year ago, I signed up for social security, and I can go to that social security website, uh, that they provide to the millions of people throughout the country, uh, at my expense, your expense, if you're a taxpayer, that you folks help pay for that, uh, availability for me to go into my social security account, look up any information I need, any documents I need, and the comparison is that here on the county level, the two hundred plus, give or take a few, uh, county employees have that same avail- availability that I do as a social security recipient, that I can, that those employees can go to that NeoGov and find whatever it is they need, that, that the comparison is that I don't have to go over to Crawfordsville to the social security office over there and wait in line for hours, my valuable time, and have them do the work for me, I can do it from my own home, in the same way that the county employees can do it from their home, whatever location they're in, they can grab the information they need, so I'm in full support of it, understanding that it's the taxpayer dollars that pay for it.
But we've also lost a couple of part-time employees because they could not figure out how to do it at home or get it all completed at home, they were getting errors, and unfortunately, there was, they were told there was not a public computer until they could do it.
So there was one situation, uh, with a treasurer, part-time employee that would need to be onboarded, uh, they had reached out on a Friday afternoon, and I was more than willing to have physical paperwork for them to go do, we're not, we're not saying like, hey, this is how you have to do it, if somebody's not comfortable feeling okay to do it online, like they can absolutely do it on paper, and we can do it that way, but like Kevin said, you know, for somebody, if they move or they wanna update their tax forms or anything like that, they can just log in and do that.
How many, how many, how many employees are onboarded on average a month?
Um, I mean, you're probably right, probably about three to four, as far as the, the onboarding portion goes.
Three to four a month, so?
But you don't, you currently don't offboard.
I have to get an average.
And you currently don't offboard on there?
Yes, we do, actually, we have started offboarding on there, so, um, yeah, so when you do their like exit interviews and close out their paperwork, get.
So do the department heads have the access to do the payroll change form on?
Yeah, they can do it on there, they also, so I know one elected official, she really likes the fact that, you know, there's this tool on there that you can go, you do your quarterly reviews on there, any documentation, any, you know, you wanna document excesses, absences, or any issues that you have with your, you know, employees, like you can do all of that on NeoGov.
Is there anything that NeoGov had that doesn't allow you or Megan to do?
What do you?
So if you got rid of the tool, is there anything that wouldn't cover like you and Megan doing the work? So right now, if I do the math, it's, we're, we're paying eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars, up to twenty, up to twenty-five hundred dollars per employee for this tool, pretty costly, onboarding, and a lot of the?
But not no sheriff's department, so take off a hundred employees.
Okay, so take off a hundred employees, up to three to four employees a month, so I'm, it's a, ninety thousand dollars a year is a very costly tool to be onboarding employees, that's part, that's part one, part two, are you aware the Commissioner Byer wants to put a pause on this?
Um, I did not know that Commissioner Byer wanted to put a pause on it, but, uh, that's his opinion, he, I mean?
More than an opinion, he's the city commissioner.
Well, yes, but it's, it's also an opinion.
They're both not an opinion.
Okay. It doesn't matter whether you're a commissioner or not, you have an opinion on that.
Yeah.
Here's the thing, I, I feel like it's hard to really get a whole picture on what NeoGov does if we don't sit down with everyone and show them the capabilities.
So we, in three years, have we done that?
Uh, I know that it's been reached out that we do that, um.
Can I?
Melissa knows.
Can I?
I don't like it, but whatever.
No, I mean, we're gonna have a discussion about it, it's, 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 it's a, we're gonna spend over a quarter million dollars over the next three years on a, on a tool, over a hundred of our employees don't use it, the auditor who processes payroll is giving us, you know, relevant examples, you're giving us examples of things that we could potentially do that we aren't doing, we have another chief deputy of an office that's saying that they don't like it and they don't use it, I'm now being told that, you know, it's an opinion of a boss of yours, that, that does matter, who said, hey?
Well, I didn't say it didn't matter.
No, Don, I'm saying what Donnie said, I'm saying, it does matter, it, 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 it's very relevant because it's no small amount of money, because my original question to us, if you got rid of NeoGov, would you and Megan still be able to do the work at a cost of eighteen hundred seventy-five dollars to twenty-five hundred dollars per employee, you could almost be in a part-time person just to onboard people, and it would be a significant cost savings, cause Kevin said it, it's the taxpayer dollars, like, I'm gonna ask the same question.
I agree, it is, it is a lot of money to be asking for, I think that in the bigger picture, we, we have more success with, so when we post a job, we post it on NeoGov, NeoGov talks to Indeed, so we have our applications coming in through NeoGov that the department heads have access to, that they can pull, they get to vet all of the resumes and applications sent in and, and start their hiring process, so that really helps them, I think it also helps get this person ready, because when they come in, like, couldn't Megan, couldn't Megan and I sit down with them and fill out all of their paperwork when they come in? Sure, but if we're gonna look at that and tack it on, like, that is, you know, more because Megan has taken on more, I've taken on more, the office has taken on more, just in general over the past three years of her being here, and so if we're going to do that, I mean, that's up to you guys, right?
Right.
But I'm just saying, I think that it helps streamline the new hires coming in, it makes it easier on them, it makes it easier on the department head, it's secure, I mean.
Um, okay, can I, is it, are you done? Or, cause I don't wanna interrupt until you're already finished, okay, a couple thoughts, one, um, we're obviously fiduciary, so I appreciate everybody's, I mean, that's why we're looking at the budget, um, it's ninety thousand dollars, it's not, it's not a hiccup, it's, it's money, at the same time, I guess, I don't have near the emotions around, um, it's, you know, usability or not, but I appreciate everybody's thoughts, I guess from a process perspective, I'm just sitting here thinking about how we're, you know, I mean, Kenny, when you brought this up, you let us know where you stand with it, and I appreciate that, and I think others have that view, but have we had a discussion with HR about the, you know, the functionality, which isn't just onboarding, um, the multi-purpose functionality, and whether or not we should use this tool going forward with a more robust training process, again, the thought of us taking something away without that? That robust debate really concerns me from a process perspective, at the same time, ninety thousand is nothing to sneeze at, and this is our third year, so I'm, I'm just sensing like several different camps here, and again, Kenny and Erin, you guys may have had these conversations with HR because you ran the budget process, so I apologize if I'm sort of stepping over my skis here, but have we had a process discussion with HR on a broader level to say, hey, guys, we're looking at this system, should we discuss its multi-functionality, are we, are we using it to its robust potential, or should we back away from it? So I'll just let you respond, cause I don't, I don't know if those conversations have occurred.
I've spoken to Megan a couple times, and she knows my feelings about the cost.
Okay.
So, and she, she's made several comments that, you know, Kenny's not favored in this, and, and it's really of, of the cost and kind of what Aaron looked through in the notes, so is, is it really something that we wanna spend ninety thousand dollars a year to do, and so?
My understanding that, um, there may be like some components that our HR department would be willing to like give up, but others they wanna keep, is that something you can, um, bring to us either later today or next month?
Because if you add components, it would add a cost too, cause there's?
Yes, yes, and so I know that nothing was gonna be added.
The ninety thousand is what we've got now, and if you add some more components, it's gonna add cost, and that's, uh, Megan talked to me about that, it's like, you know, I'm not willing to add any more cost to.
But to that point too, are there components that we're paying for that we're, we're just not gonna apply? You know, can we, if it is à la carte, then are there components that we can pull out and yet still have a tool that will, will function, and, and then try to educate, you know, let's, let's talk to the other officers and say, what is the problem? What, why don't you like it?
So from our, from our process?
I think also by using this, you, you use, you lose a lot of one-on-one contact, and I'm sorry, we're on old school, I think people should sit down face-to-face when they're filling out paperwork from human resources and know who, who those human resource people are, what they do, and that they need to go to them for these specific issues and these specific issues, there are a lot of people in our county that have no clue where they're supposed to go, because they're filling something out on a computer.
I agree with that.
And, and I know that that's just the way of the world these days, but I still think you've got to have human contact.
I agree with that, but we do, uh, do orientations for new employees, they come in for about two hours, um, and we do have an orientation with them, and we explain the benefits, we explain why we're here for them, get them contact for IT, contact for facilities, anybody that they might need, and what they would need them for, and, so we do do that.
So you're willing to assist in the process? I mean, if they don't have to do it remotely, they could do that in your office.
So I actually talked to Sean earlier about, uh, how we could look at like having a computer set up, so if somebody is struggling like at home doing the paperwork, when they come in, like we can sit down with them, we can walk them through it and, and just help streamline.
I just wanna answer your question, Sher, I'm happy to have, I'm happy to have a, a discussion around it, but as you said, we've been, we've had this system for three years, and this council, two years, we've had it, and we were approached by this council, by the commissioners and by Megan, who said, I'm overwhelmed, I'm overworked, so we got a tool, and if the tool hasn't been fully utilized, and now it takes us asking questions about its cost, its usefulness, and its effectiveness, effectiveness now, for you to say, oh, we need to do something, I can give you a prime example of when this happened again, it's a tool we have called Time Clock Plus, it's because I asked the same questions, what are we doing with it, what's its effectiveness, and then all of a sudden, oh, well, look at all these different models and different things that we can do, then commissioners came to us again, HR's overworked, we need to do this, we got our assistant, but now we have this tool, nothing against you, I'm not knocking you, but I go back to it, what happens in two or three years, when it's like, well, this tool isn't enough, we need to add even more, like, at what point do we say, all right, we have people here, everybody knows that the county is growing, so when is the clerk, the auditor, the recorder, the treasurer, everyone say, all right, my office is growing, I need more tools and more, more resources, asking the question, I'm happy to have that conversation, but ninety thousand dollars, as you add more modules, tools, whatever, the cost is gonna go up.
Yeah, and I, I don't disagree with what you said, Erin, what I, what I'm still sensing though is a, a little bit of a vacuum here in terms of process, and it's not just with HR, but I can, you know, I'm just thinking here, what other, like you just mentioned time clock and, um, I'm sure there's other issues where we, maybe we should sit down outside the budget time and talk about these things, so that we are fully vetted on whether or not we believe, you know, we're gonna have the financial wherewithal to support it or not, and again, I, maybe, I'm, I'm probably missing a lot here, Kenny, but?
I think, no, you're, you're, you're on, but even if we got the financial to do it, it doesn't still make financial sense to do it.
But, but the diligence, the due diligence in having a dialogue, or maybe even, you know, a thirty thousand foot discussion with several departments, all with differing views, and we're in there because we have a financial role to either support or not support, I just don't, you know, I guess, when we start looking at this number today, yeah, it gets your attention, cause it has, uh, four zeros after a nine, and so of course, it's, it's worthy of our time and effort, and I'm thrilled that we're talking about it, at the same time, I think it's also our duty to be not just fiscal stewards, but to have some, some dialogue of substance around things like this versus just pulling it, because some of us maybe aren't as familiar with certain of its functionalities or lack thereof, or certain of its applicability to people, or its training that has been spent or not spent on educating the two hundred plus employees, that, that's all I'm saying, and, and I know that's a lot, but it's also, I think it's missing for, uh, in this particular case, cause I don't, I don't know all those functionalities, and, and perhaps, maybe I'm saying we should have, I think we need to have a, a more meaty dialogue about whether or not we're, we're getting the, the use of the taxpayer dollar here.
I have one question if I may, uh, Sheriff, I'm gonna put you on the spot, I, I don't know the answer, but why not, Oliver Crowe has mentioned minus a hundred employees throughout the sheriff's department, do you, does the sheriff's department use a different kind of program with respect to what their employees' needs are, or are you willing to say that of those hundred employees, uh, under the sheriff's department, do any of them use this program?
Nobody uses this program, and the reason why is it's a lot more stringent, versus its background.
Yours is what?
A lot more stringent, its backgrounds, polygraphs, psychological, it's, it's just a lot more meaty, taste to it.
Okay, but, but when an employee has an H, uh, under the sheriff's department, when, when that employee has an HR question or concern, do they go to NeoGov? They do not, they go through something completely different.
They use for a NeoGov CD.
Sheriff's office, that's our HR.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Debbie, if you hire somebody in your office, how do you do it?
I would just do it.
Huh?
I would just do the paperwork with them.
Okay.
I would just do it myself.
But Debbie, are there W nines, all that, you can give it to them to fill out?
Melissa, would you do the same? Carol, when was the last time you hired someone in your office?
The last time we hired somebody was about two years ago, um, other than one that just transferred as a young employee, um, I don't, I mean, I don't know that we've used NeoGov, I think, you know, we're right here, so they just walked down. Um, I don't, I mean, I don't know that we've used NeoGov, I think, you know, we're right here, so they just walked down and did the paperwork.
Yeah, I just, yeah. All right, I think it's to Sheriff's more broadly.
Can I be heard, please? Sure. Thank you. I don't have an opinion as to whether or not it's the best program. I don't know if it's a cost-effective program, uh, reminds me of that. I'm still, that we use it heavily in our office, uh, more than just an onboarding. For, for us onboard, it takes multiple days to onboard in our office. It takes multiple days of multiple trains. It's a, it's a, it's a huge process. We use the onboarding religiously in our office, the onboarding portion of that. We also use it for recruiting, right now I've got an open recruitment. It organizes all my recruitment. It also has, it, I've set up where it automatically sends back letters where I don't, we don't have to touch it. It's automatic processes. We also use it in other ways, my chief of staff does that, and I really appreciate Sherri's point of view in that I get it, some of you guys don't like it, and that's fine, I'm not, I'm, it's like Time Clock Plus. The history of Boone County, this predates, this predates these guys and HR. The history of Boone County is, we'll buy programs, and we're terrible, I mean terrible, at implementing them, terrible, right? And then it comes up to these councils, means, what are we doing? And then, you know, and then finally, we, we, we get working on it. I think Time Clock Plus might be an example of that, you know, where, I think now it's, I mean, Time, Time Clock Plus was a godsend to our office.
Was it?
Yeah, because, I mean, and you have to look at the differences. We've got offices that are, what's that, six, seven people, eight people, and thirty-five, or, you know, there's a lot of different offices, and some are growing, and some aren't. This type of programming, this type of tool that you guys are using, is something that we're gonna need either now or in the future. I don't care what one we have, I just want us to have something, especially because like Time Clock Plus, it's like I said, it's been a godsend to our office in terms of time sheets, it's been a godsend. And this has helped us a lot in terms of organization and doing some of the things, um, in terms of recruiting, in terms of onboarding, and the other stuff that we do use it for, which I can't really talk to, but it does help. Again, I'm not speaking to whether or not it's cost-effective, I'm not speaking, are there better ones out there? I don't know, but this is the example of something we do need to have, and be prepared to have as we, as we grow. You know, as, you know, prosecutor's office grows, like every year, our caseload goes up three percent. Last three years, our caseload's going up three percent. So that means eventually I might have to add more people, eventually, right? And offices that have similar, but we're gonna have to have these types of tools so we can effectively manage our people. So.
One, one last, go ahead.
No, and so I just, I'm not, I, I don't have an opinion again, I don't know if this is really cost-effective. I know some people don't like the stuff, I know people don't use it, and that's, you know, you know, some people, I embrace technology and try to use it as much as possible, and, um, like I said, it's been helpful for our office, but I think it's something that we need to make sure that we don't just do away with this and not.
There you go.
And not have something for the future as we grow, and as, as we need things like this for the bigger offices. Yeah, smaller offices, W O's offices, I get it, they don't, they don't replace people as often, you know, they don't need to do that type of stuff, but I'm off, I mean, every, almost every year, I'm, I'm every month I'm recruiting, it seems like nowadays, I'm recruiting in some, in some fashion.
No, I appreciate your input, and I, again, I, I'm agnostic on NeoGov. I, I'm not connected with the company, so just so everybody that's on the camera knows, I'm not wedded to it at all. But I think process-wise, I'm wondering, Sean, this is a rhetorical question, not one that I really want you to answer, but is there something that we could institute, and again, institute without a policy, but to say, hey, for all these software issues where you talk about the last several years, we're really good at not implementing robustly? Is there a way that Sean could provide some discipline or muscle in that regard that would allow us to determine over a period of time whether or not we have the, the, the return on investment on these kinds of things? And again, I, I'm picking on Sean, but I don't want him to come and respond to it, cause I'm afraid of what he might say, but. Just a thought, thank you though.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that completely, I mean, NeoGov may not be the right tool, but I don't think that we need to take that number out of the budget, because I think we need to implement a tool that is gonna be used by all the offices outside the Sheriff's Department, different, different set of needs.
That kinda goes back into, you know, like Ken, he was, he walked over there, sorry. He was talking about Time Clock Plus, and I know the Sheriff's Department uses a different type of, of clock-in system. Is, is there a possibility to merge those so that we can actually get a better cost-effective package?
Exactly.
On, on both, both of those items, so it's something that needs to be looked at.
Yeah, yeah, to refine.
Okay.
Yeah, I think always for the larger offices too, I mean, I think Ken has a fund that he pays for a lot of his technology, maybe creating a line where certain offices contribute to those tools since they're heavy users of it. Like, hey, they have a tool that uses, you know, for instance, what is this tool called again?
NeoGov.
NeoGov, hey, he does a lot of recruiting, he, he puts a lot of emphasis on talent. Hey, let's get something that helps, you know, support that, and then they'll take, you know, they take advantage of it, so. We'll have a better product discussion.
No, that was, that was a really good discussion, appreciate it, from everybody. I think we will move on from there, go back to Lori, I think she came in, to talk about.
Thank you.
The prosecutor's building, so.
We just had a question, basically was that.
The point six thousand, that you put in there, is that something for a project that?
It's not a particular project, that's just there in case, you know, the H A C was to go out. You just gotta have some money for this overbuilding, you've got to have the money.
Sort of contingency.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
I was gonna say, like, we just had a huge, uh, pipe, pipe issue, it was unexpected.
A sewer pipe issue, I think, or what's it called?
Yeah, we, we did, did cut into concrete.
Right.
Two different places, the foundation, so, um, yeah, so I, I kind of, it's, it's a contingency here. I would suggest you probably keep their.
Yeah.
And that's probably why we still have seventy-five percent of the budget remaining, right? I mean, it's just one of these.
The particular item is for the contingency item, is, is what Lori just indicated to us, so for the rest of the council, you know, whether, whether we think that's a little bit too much, or, or whatever, that's, that's the council's, uh, discussion on that? And was there anything else?
Um, yes.
Anex, KeyBank.
The long-range capital plan, we were told that you guys budgeted that, twenty-five thousand dollars. Is that for continued updates, is that, cause I thought we.
That's just in case we have like a, a consultant to come in, like, um, that's where we pay, like, pay that account for like the window project to come in. That is more like a consulting, like, cause we were gonna change it from long-range capital plan to a consultant.
I would prefer to change that.
Yes, we definitely need to change it, just so that it doesn't look like.
You just want a consulting, you want indirect consulting, which would be a bigger umbrella?
Consulting.
And would annex and KeyBank also be under, the annex building and KeyBank under there, are those also included in the Max Lori discussion?
You mean a separate line?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Could we give a motion to add a, a full line?
Yes. Can we change the name on that, or do you want to leave the long-range capital plan in there for future?
I'd like to leave it in there.
Okay. No, we're gonna leave the long-range capital plan in there because they need.
So, but this line needs to be, this, this line needs to be a consultant, whether it needs to be for facilities or something, so it specifies that it's a consultant, that the facility.
Facilities consulting, or however you guys wanna word it, and then we'll put that twenty-five thousand dollars in that line.
I'd make a motion that we add a line to CCD, um, call facilities consulting.
Second.
Should we put the amount there too?
I guess, and then we'll take the twenty-five thousand from long-range capital plan and add twenty-five thousand to facilities consulting.
There's been a motion, it's been seconded, it's been seconded by Dan. Is there any further discussions? If not, all is in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Okay, we also have jail building. We had discussed in August that we were going to possibly move, uh, two hundred and five thousand to jail lit.
Right.
What fund are you in Debbie?
We're still in CCD.
Ninety-one twenty-four jail building.
Jail building. It was an increase, they asked for an increase, and then we talked about moving it to jail lit. Didn't know why we needed it in CCD anymore, since we had jail lit funds that could pay for those.
Did we make that as a motion?
We, no, it was just a discussion and we held off on it.
So with that being said.
I think that's when we have both places.
That, that does make sense.
We have that in both places, we've got to revise it both.
So we, we need to make a, a decision on where we're gonna take it out of, but it does make sense that the jail building should be out of jail lit.
But we know why there was a seventy-five thousand dollar increase, Lori.
Additional pumps and cleaning is what I have. Additional pumps, uh.
Pumps.
Pumps that Max is gonna be responsible for cleaning, some of which are related to the coroner's office and, I mean, their equipment, I thought.
Okay, so question for, for Justin?
He's over there.
Oh, he's over there. So Justin also has his disposal.
It's, it's different though, right? They talked about this, there's the tanks, and then there's the, um, there's, we're talking about two different things. There's like the tanks, and then there's waste.
Yeah, and these are tanks that a Max can take care of versus the coroner's office, I think. I believe that's, I mean, I had the detailed meeting with Max and Lori early on and John, so I think that's what, if you, I mean, if we want, we can confirm right here.
No, that's fine, I just, no.
I believe that was it, that's, that's what I have in my notes.
Well, I have another question for Justin in a, a little bit on, on, on the disposal. Have you ever got a, a firm quote on your twenty thousand dollars on disposing of your?
The, so the biohazardous waste?
Right.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yes.
Yeah, so I put it out to three different companies, um, and that was the ones that I could find for the specific biohazardous waste. With one of the three companies did not return a quote, said we're not willing to bid on this contract. Uh, so those companies are like, uh, it's a private ownership, that, at that point, that company owner was selling it, and he said that he would not be able to honor that with you. Um, then like the biggest company that we had there, uh, they returned a proposal, uh, I believe it was like two hundred dollars per pickup, um, but their pickup was gonna be on a scheduled date per month, um, so it would not provide any degree of flexibility. I asked if I needed to have something, it took, sometimes I encounter things that are, are not stuff that you wanna keep along, keep around very long. Uh, so they could move those dates, uh, but it would just count. So I basically, for the, the quotes they returned me, I would have X amount of pickups for that. The third company was like, I believe, two hundred twenty dollars, um, and it was, you, you call me and we'll get it in a few hours.
A flex of that one.
So I did have three, I have copies of, uh, the emails from the company that declined, and then the two quotes for, uh, the company.
So, I mean, it could go a couple months, or it could be sooner than that, you can go.
So, so typically, so the, the, and I'm sorry, there's no easy way to talk about the stuff that I do. Um, this kind of waste is contaminated blood waste.
Sure.
And products of our investigations.
Right.
Um, that can't stay around, um, very long.
Mm-hmm.
Without becoming odorous and just not healthy for folks, so.
What's very long, in terms of?
Days, I want that to be, I, ideally, I would like it gone within a week of us, uh, having an interaction.
But, but that's not gonna be two hundred dollars a week then that you're gonna be spending?
So, no, no, so, so it comes in a, uh, like a box, so it's very regulated. So you provide like a box, it fills it, so basically we fill it up, um, under normal conditions. If we had something that needed to be moved sooner for the interest of sanitation and health, uh, we would, we would do it more frequently.
Justin, forty, forty-five years ago, I worked at the hospital where, where the Walgreens is now.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, one, one of my duties was when somebody like you or a surgeon had called and said, Kevin, we need to come up and grab this, again, not the big, uh, grab the, uh, bag of contaminated materials, and I would take it up to the maintenance department, and the maintenance department had an incinerator, and it was burned. Do they still do that today?
So, we don't have an incinerator, I don't believe we have one in Boone County. So, uh, it's regulated to the point, so, um, when we have this waste disposed of, and like I get this regulated to where like they have to provide a receipt, so I think there's two options, it's auto plating it or incineration are kind of the two, I, I'm not a technical expert on the, the regulations there. Yeah, so it comes off of our property, they take care of it, uh, and have it, uh, legally disposed of.
I'm sorry, uh, is, is coroner's waste that you're talking about, it's not in this one, right?
Well, it is, and he's got twenty-two thousand dollars figured in.
But we're, we're talking about CCD, right?
I, I, but I just wanted to, I, I bounced, I'm sorry.
Well, we have people on your board with ADHD, so we've gotta do one task at a time.
Well, you started talking about waste, and I'm.
Where, where is it?
Okay, so can we?
That's all I have for you right now.
Can we finish?
Bet you got, you got a tank that'll have to be pumped every once in a while.
Yes, and that's being given by so.
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Anything else for me to moment?
Thank you.
No, thank you, Justin. Sorry about bouncing, you know, not to share, not to dip wrong. So.
So, KeyBank filling thirty thousand, or just?
Same thing, just general repairs or something was to come out.
Contingency, okay.
And then highway building, same.
So a lot of these aren't being used, like you say, cause they're, they're just contingencies, so that, that's something to just kind of keep in mind, and it's kind of almost like stakeholder.
But it's better than having an additional, right? Like if something does come up?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so something bigger than what this is.
And if something big comes up, you'd have to do an additional anyway. I mean, yeah, absolutely, or re-approve it from another one. Um, so back to the jail building.
Right.
Are we moving that two oh five?
Yeah, where we're taking the two oh five.
To jail lit, right.
Uh, jail lit, and so we need a motion to take the two oh five out of jail lit, right?
Go for it, John.
Well, we'll have to make a motion for this fund anyway, so you can, the motion will be to take that to zero.
Okay.
Hey, I was getting ready to.
I know.
Take the two oh five to zero.
Yes. Are leaving the eighty-five thousand in there for NeoGov? What was the?
We'd probably need to vote on individual lines, I guess.
Yeah, but we can discuss.
Okay.
I don't know that there's a consensus on the NeoGov, so that, I guess that's what she's saying, that we might have to vote on it separately just to see whether, whether, uh, everybody's, the majority's in favor or not in favor of the NeoGov.
Okay, put that one on.
I think we could vote on everything except for NeoGov.
Um, and new equipment, we still have that one, okay. Sean, do you remember why?
It was because of the, uh, the potential grant for the security.
Yes, what'd you find out?
We won't know until October.
Well, shitfire.
I'd make a motion to approve in CCD line zero zero four three, zero zero four four, and zero zero four five, as presented.
Seven oh three seven.
Uh, oh, and seven oh three seven.
Second.
Okay.
And courthouse building, we're keeping it one point one million.
Could we pause on that?
Let, let's vote on those right there, and then we'll go to courthouse. So it's been properly moved and seconded, right Sherri?
Yes, yes.
For line zero zero four three, zero zero four four, zero zero four five, and.
Seven zero three seven.
What was that?
Seven zero three seven.
To approve those as submitted, has there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side? So, now we need to be looking at the jail building to take that to zero or to leave that in? Is there a motion on nine one two four?
I move that we take, uh, the jail building line or nine one two four, the count ending in nine one two four, to zero from two hundred and five thousand.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? If not, all is in favor, say if I say an aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side?
Aye.
Thank you. What was the next one, Debbie, the jail, no, they, yes.
IT equipment, I guess we're holding off on, Sean said we won't really know that till October. And you said wait on NeoGov, will we have a decision by October?
No, I was gonna say, I mean, we can bring it up right now, is there, if there's a, a motion, or do we wanna do some due diligence between now and October on NeoGov?
I think we need to.
Okay, let's do a little, we'll do that one, uh, in October, is that okay Debbie?
Is it courthouse building?
The courthouse building, the million dollars, what line is that? And then the courthouse building, the million dollars, what line is that?
Which was nine one two four.
First page?
It's on the first page.
Right under Highway.
Nine one two, that one point one was for HVAC controls, which you could take out, because that was an ARP. So you can cross that one off, and then I think the other was Brandon Limestone, right, Lori?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, with the new ones. And then I think, didn't we bring it down to one point one because of?
I had one point one, mine was. After the HVAC came out.
Was that a public one, the?
Yeah.